Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
During the current state of emergency due to COVID-19, council members will be participating online and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes depending upon the number of speakers.
Good evening and welcome to a regular Burbank City Council meeting, Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, please conduct a roll call, please.
Thank you. I see everybody here on the screen. Councilmember Schultz.
Present.
Councilmember Springer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anthony.
Present.
Councilmember Frutos, I see you up here. Sorry, I was looking for you.
No worries, no worries, no worries.
And Mayor Telemontes.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. There will be one period of general public comment tonight. If you would like to participate, please call now at 818-238-3335. One more time, 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until we begin public comment. As we venture into the new year, I would like to have a moment of silence for all the lives lost in 2021. May we hold each individual and their families in our thoughts and prayers while we reflect and are thankful for the impact they had in our lives. Thank you. Tonight, we have four announcements this evening.
The following are announcements for January 4th, 2022. The City of Burbank will be participating in the Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count on the night of January 25th, 2022, starting at 7:00 p.m. Volunteers are needed to canvass our neighborhoods, parks, and public spaces as part of the count. Volunteers need to sign up as teams and should consist of a minimum of two individuals per team. The count usually lasts two hours and this event will be contactless using mobile technology. To register, please visit theycountwou.org or the City of Burbank website, burbankca.gov under the latest announcements banner. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one vacancy on the Art in Public Places Committee for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2022. The deadline to submit an application is Wednesday, February 2nd at 5:00 p.m. If interested, apply online at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. For more information, please contact the Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for five positions on the Charter Review Committee. The term is contingent upon completion of the Charter Review. The deadline to submit an application is Wednesday, February 2nd at 5:00 p.m. If interested, apply online at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. For more information, please contact the City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. A big congratulations to the Burbank Tournament of Roses Association for winning the Mayor Award during the 133rd Annual Rose Parade. The winning flow is on display now through January 6th at 8:00 a.m. in the parking lot located at the corner of Olive Avenue and Glen Oaks Boulevard. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
Thank you very much. We have one presentation on the agenda this evening. The Burbank City Council would like to recognize the winners of the 2021 Our Burbank Holiday Decorating Contest. First place in the residential category goes to Arnolfo and Tina. Beautiful. Yeah. Congratulations. That looks awesome. In the first place in the commercial category goes to Burbank Self-Storage. Another very nice. Lot of time and effort. Excellent winners. Thank you very much. Burbank City Council would like to present the winners with a certificate of recognition for your winning designs. Thank you for participating in this year's Our Burbank Holiday Decorating Contest and congratulations. Your community appreciates your creativity, enthusiasm, dedication, and the time that it took to bring those designs to a winning mode. Thank you very much to both of you. Yeah, very nice. As a reminder, if you would like to participate in general public comment, please call now at 818-238-3335. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one item. I'd like to call on Eric Baumgartner, our Emergency Management Coordinator, to provide an update on our COVID efforts and a general update on COVID.
Welcome, Mr. Baumgartner.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. Eric Baumgartner, Emergency Management Coordinator for the City of Burbank Fire Department. Want to give you a brief update on our statistics as well as some of the other information with COVID. Currently, Burbank is seeing approximately 14,109 COVID cases in the City of Burbank since the onset of COVID. Now, keep in mind that is since the onset back in early 2020. Our seven-day average of new cases as of January 1st is 174 new cases. Just a few weeks ago, as of December 18th, the seven-day average of new cases for the City of Burbank was only 21. Our seven-day average was as low as the teens pre-Thanksgiving. So, we're starting to see a little bit of a surge mainly because of the season, which I'll get into a little bit later. Our current vaccine statistics as a county right now, all those eligible five years of age and older, county as a whole for having one dose of vaccine is hovering right about 75%. The City of Burbank is doing better for those five years of age and older for having one dose. We're sitting at 81.6% of our residents that are eligible have had at least one dose. Those 12 and older, once we take out the younger age group, which was just made eligible, our numbers increased to 84.9%, which has had one dose. And then for our seniors, we're at approximately 94%, which have had one dose. When you look at those that are fully vaccinated, so those having two doses of Pfizer or Moderna or a single dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson, as a county as a whole, we're sitting at 67%. Again, the City of Burbank is doing fairly better. Our fully vaccinated rate for five and over is 74.9%. So, basically 75% of our population is fully vaccinated. 12 years of age and older, our numbers again increase and go up to 78.4%. And for those 65 and older that are fully vaccinated with two doses, goes up to 86%. When we look at the numbers for fully vaccinated plus having their booster, at the county level, we're down at 24%. So, only 24% have gone on to get their booster. In Burbank, again, our numbers are fairly better. Five and older, so everybody eligible to have their booster is at 31%. 12 and older is 33%. And when we look at 65 and above, our numbers are really good. At 65 and above, we're already at 50% of our senior population, 65 and older, have received a booster. So, the seven-day average of vaccines being administered to Burbank residents, which includes new vaccines, second doses, as well as booster administrations, our numbers have been decreasing on our daily numbers. Back in late summer, we were seeing a daily average of 60 to 70 people that were Burbank residents or having a Burbank address when they got their vaccine, being in the range of 60 to 70. We saw it start to decline post-Thanksgiving, started to drop down to 55 to 60 as our daily average. After the Thanksgiving period, we saw it increase to 150 a day, but that's mainly because of a bump with the new eligibility of those being five years of age and older. Since Christmas and since the winter portion here, we're starting to see a steady decline. The first week of December is our lowest number of vaccinations being administered since widespread availability. Since the beginning of December, we're seeing now numbers in the 20s and 30s for daily vaccinations. Vaccines are still widely available at most pharmacies in Burbank. Most will take walk-ins with no appointment. However, it's always best to go online when possible and make an appointment. Shifting to our hospitalizations, looking at the daily hospitalization poll for the County of Los Angeles, currently, our hospitalization rate is only seeing about 8% of those occupied beds countywide as being COVID beds. So, right now, we're seeing 92% of those people hospitalized are non-COVID related. We are seeing a little bit of a bump. If we look back at the weekly poll, most of the fall leading up to Thanksgiving, we were in the 3% and 4% range for most weeks. So, we have doubled our percentage. We've gone up to 8%. We are still lower than the peak rate that we were at during our summer bump, or summer surge following post-Fourth of July through Labor Day. Post-Fourth of July through Labor Day, we mainly saw during that period, 8%, 9%, and 10% hospitalization rates for COVID. So, we're right at the lower end of the cusp for what we saw during that period. Hospitalization rates demographically, those under 17 years of age have the lowest hospitalization rate, followed by those 65 and older being the next lowest demographic being hospitalized. The second largest demographic being hospitalized is 50 to 64-year-olds, and the largest demographic being hospitalized is 18 to 49-year-olds. So, 18 to 49-year-olds are still the highest at risk, again, mainly because of their social behavior and being out in groups and doing more activities. I want to be careful and not equate COVID to seasonal flu because it's clearly not the same virus, but I want to point out similarities to what is seen with seasonal flu every year as well as COVID this time last year. We're seeing a seasonal spike or a surge as a result of both being in winter with colder weather and more people gathering indoors, as well as the holiday season with family get-togethers and holiday traveling. This year's surge is seeing higher case rates as a combination of the new Omicron variant, which is believed to be more contagious, as well as less restrictions in place this year, and people becoming more complacent and lowering their guard after seeing lower case rates and being cautious for so long. There's an estimated 37% increase in overall holiday travel this year over 2021 and nearly a 75% increase in air travel between 2020 and 2021. Based on previous trends, it's anticipated that in the coming weeks, as seasonal surge begins to wane, we'll see a decrease in case rates as well as our hospitalization. We can still do our part to be vigilant and not become complacent, taking simple precautions like washing our hands, following social distancing protocols when possible, and wearing face coverings will help slow and even prevent the spread of the virus. Vaccines are still widely available, as I previously mentioned, through most of our commercial pharmacies, and once eligible, people should get their booster. That concludes my statistics and update report for you.
Thank you for the update. Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Very informative. Moving on to the next agenda. Mr. City Attorney, will you please report on closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Members of the public, the City Council met in closed session this evening to discuss two matters. The first matter was anticipated litigation where there is significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. There was one case. City Council took no reportable action. Second matter the City Council considered was public employee performance evaluation for the City Attorney pursuant to 54957, and City Council took no reportable action.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Now is the time for general public comment. Members of the public may address the Council for up to three minutes on any matter concerning city business. Remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver a public comment. To participate, please call 818-238-3335. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers online for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We do have one caller and we're ready to put him through.
Put him through.
Our first caller is Jeffrey Gold.
Welcome. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you too. Hi, my name is Jeffrey Gold. I'd like to... Oh, I'm sorry. Is it a good time to start? Hello?
Yes, go ahead and start.
Okay, thank you. Happy New Years. My name is Jeffrey Gold. I'd like to make a couple of brief comments regarding Metro's proposed BRT plan. First off, I want to thank staff and the City Council for standing up to Metro to ensure we won't have to deal with these dedicated bus lanes on Olive. I have sent my comments to Metro as Council directed last month. I completely agree with our city decision-makers that mixed flow is the only appropriate option for Burbank. Do we know if there's a meeting in Burbank or with Metro about this issue coming up anytime soon? Any updates you could provide would be most appreciated. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Any other callers?
No, Mr. Mayor, we don't have any more callers.
Okay. So, there being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for a brief response from City Council, City Manager, and our City Attorney. Councilmembers, Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the caller, Mr. Gold. Mr. City Manager, I know there were some community input meetings related to the BRT. Is staff aware of any future upcoming BRT input meetings?
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are not aware. There's not currently any plan. Right now, the game plan is we are waiting for the final environmental impact report to come back, and then we're actually going to bring that back to Council to comment on that based on whatever comes out of that final EIR report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gold, for calling and also for sending your comments to Metro.
Councilmember Frutos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Gold, for calling. I did receive, just for information, not a discussion, an email from Metro that apparently they have decided not to, how would I say, take our curb party on Olive, but as of this afternoon, the email is clearly stating that they want to take a lane away from travel in each direction down Olive. So, that is the recommendation. It's still moving forward, and I just wanted to update. I cannot get involved in a discussion. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, Mr. Gold, thank you for calling, and that is true. The recommendation from staff, Metro staff, is going to be that they take up the first lane. They're not going to take up the parking lane, but their recommendation to the Metro Board is going to be that they take up the first lane on both sides of the street. So, there's where we are, and we'll see what develops when they take it to the board. Thank you very much for calling. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you. Item number one is adoption of an ordinance for zone map amendment mending the zoning for the property located at 228 South Naomi Street from Media District High Density Residential MDR-4 to Media District General Business MDC-3, project number 210005452. Item number two is City Council minutes. Approve the minutes for December 7th, December 14th, the City Council Reorganization Meeting on December 13th, and the dark meetings of December 21st and December 28th. Item three, adoption of an ordinance to establish a streamlined ministerial review and public oversight process for development projects submitted under Senate Bill 35 Streamlined Ministerial Approval Process, Government Code Section 65913.4. And those are the items for the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'd actually like to pull item three for comment only, brief comment.
Brief comment, you say?
I promise, Mr. Mayor, it'll be brief.
We would not need to necessarily pull it just for a brief comment.
Okay.
Yeah, because if you want to pull it, it's going to come back at the end of the meeting.
Okay, my apologies, Mr. Mayor. I don't intend to pull it. I'd just like to make a brief comment. I'm fine to go forward with the process.
Anyone, any other council members? All right, let's go ahead with number three comment, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment because I did receive some questions about my vote after the last meeting, and I just wanted to share that I'm with the majority of the Council. I supported the original underlying motion to have the City Council be responsible for the public oversight process. However, I do not believe that the process contemplated for by this ordinance is provided for by statute. I don't believe it's the most efficient option before the Council. Consequently, I have concerns that it could lead to redundancies in staff time and ultimately costs that will be borne by the taxpayers. With that said, I fully expect it will pass tonight, and I look forward to working with the majority of the Council to ensure that we're looking at the objective standards. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. So, is there a motion for the consent?
I'll move and send.
Councilmember Springer, second, anyone? Councilmember Frutos, thank you.
Ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Councilmember Springer?
Yep.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes to one and two, no to number three.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes on one and two, no on three.
And Mayor Telemontes?
I'm kind of confused whether we're going with the one and three or one and two. And three, yes. One and two and three, yes. Thank you. Is that clear?
Yes, the entire consent calendar. Thank you.
There's one report to Council this evening. The first report is the overview of the Burbank Water Empower's Water Conservation Programs. Ms. Rosan Soloyan, Acting Marketing Manager, please present the report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Telemontes, Vice Mayor Anthony, Councilmember Frutos, Councilmember Springer, Councilmember Schultz, and the public. My name is Rosan Soloyan, Marketing Associate and currently Acting Marketing Manager at Burbank Water Empower. I am here to present about water conservation programs offered to Burbank residential and commercial customers. Can you all see my slides?
We see the front, we see the front page of your presentation.
Okay.
Yes.
As we all know, Burbank is dependent on 100% imported water purchased from the Metropolitan Water District, MWD. MWD is a regional wholesale water supplier importing water from the Colorado River and Northern California. BWP is one of the 26 member agencies of MWD, and customers of member agencies have access to MWD's regional water conservation programs and MWD-funded member agency administrative programs. BWP's funding for water conservation programs come from two independent funding sources, BWP's self-imposed Water Public Benefits Charge Fund and MWD's Conservation Credits Program Fund. BWP has lots of ways to help its residential and commercial customers conserve water. Burbank residents can get regional rebates for water efficiency measures. This year, BWP added supplemental funding to MWD's regional rebate program to encourage additional conservation during times of drought. Increased rebates are available for high-efficiency clothes washers, premium high-efficiency toilets, sprinkler nozzles, water-based irrigation controllers, soil moisture sensors, and flow monitoring devices. Rebates are also available for turf removal, rain barrels, cisterns, and hose-beep irrigation controllers. Commercial rebates are also available for various water conservation measures, including premium high-efficiency toilets, urinals, food stimmers, different landscaping equipment, and more. In addition to various rebate programs, BWP also offers home improvement program with indoor and outdoor water surveys, as well as direct installation of showerheads, aerators, premium high-efficiency toilets for Burbank customers at no out-of-pocket cost. The program is available for residential single-family, multifamily, and multifamily common area customers. Customers in disadvantaged communities can also receive soil moisture sensors, water-based irrigation controllers, and high-efficiency nozzles. And as you may recall, disadvantaged communities are defined by the state based on a combination of economic, health, and environmental burdens. I would like to mention that currently, we are taking a proactive approach towards slowing down the spread of the COVID-19 and pausing all the home visits offered through our home improvement, refrigerator exchange, and AC replace before it breaks program until the case surge declines. BWP also offers various water conservation, education, awareness, and engagement resources to our customers and help them conserve water. Burbank's garden, gardening webpage provides helpful information on California native plants, landscaping ideas, and also customers can utilize garden tools to help them identify plants for their water-efficient gardens. This year, BWP collaborated with several neighboring utilities on three rain barrel distribution events, and as a result, 80 customers participated in rain barrel distribution events and 140 rain barrels distributed to our customers. Our graywater education webpage contains helpful resources on how to use graywater in your garden. It includes information about types of graywater systems, guidelines, and helpful links. And I would also like to mention that those links include free introductory online classes for our customers to take and also... for our customers to take, and also those links contain videos on how to construct a simple laundry-to-landscape graywater systems. Graywater is water from washing machines, showerheads, bathtubs, and sinks, and it is used for outdoor irrigation and to flush toilets. There are two types of graywater systems for outdoor irrigation, branched drain graywater systems, when showers and lavatory sinks drain via gravity to landscape, and those systems require a permit. And also, there is laundry-to-landscape graywater systems when water from clothes washers is discharged via gravity to landscape, and those systems do not require a permit as long as 13 minimum requirements under the California code are followed and met by the installer. The laundry-to-landscape graywater systems are installed by attaching the washing machine hose directly to a diverter valve, allowing customers to switch the flow of graywater between the sewer and the graywater irrigation system. The system is low-cost if installed by the homeowner, and it is used to irrigate trees, shrubs, plants, but it's not used for turf because you cannot spray graywater on your lawn. It is also important to mention that graywater water savings is not equal to the water generated by the system, and it is actually equal to the reduction in potable demands. Graywater systems provide a financial benefit to the homeowner if the total life cycle value of the potable water savings is greater than the total life cycle cost of the system. For example, if we take 274-day irrigation season and a household of three people, the household can save somewhere around 5,000 gallons, which considering our rate, it will be around $25 in savings per year. And estimated simple payback depends on many various factors, and mainly if system is installed by a homeowner or a professional installer. If the system is installed by a homeowner, the payback period can range somewhere from three to 25 years. And then if the system is installed by a professional installer, the payback can actually range from somewhere from 18 to 125 years. To compare the cost of various conservation programs, staff calculated and compared ratios of device device cost per acre foot of water savings for different conservation programs and measures. While many of the devices fall below the Tier 1 residential water rate, some measures exceed that cost. We also offer Water Smart Program and portal to our customers. It's a great resource to help our residential customers to monitor their water usage and also receive leak alerts and notifications. BWP also offers school education initiatives to students in Burbank. BWP's Living Vice Program offers energy-water education to Burbank 6th grade students through an online platform, and also energy-water efficiency kits to each participating student, and students can take those kits home and install with their parents. Each year, we have over 1,000 6th graders who participate in the program. Solar Cup is an educational program. It's sponsored by MWD, and each year, we have two teams participating in the competition by building and racing solar-powered boats and learning about conservation, natural resources, electrical and mechanical engineering, and much more. This year, BWP partnered with MWD to find student artists and raise awareness about water conservation. As a result, BWP selected nine winners from all grade categories. And in addition to that, MWD selected two student winners, and those artworks will be displayed in the 2022 Water is Life Student Art Calendar. All of the artwork submissions can be found on our website, burbankwaterempower.com artcontest. BWP has two new initiatives this year. MWD's Innovative Conservation Program, or ICP, provides funding for research that documents water savings and reliability of new innovative water-saving devices. And last year, BWP's proposal titled Leak Detection and Water Consumption Monitoring in Multifamily Properties was selected to receive $50,000 in grant funding under the ICP program. BWP is going to install 200 to 250 H2O devices at each level in multifamily buildings, and we will be evaluating the effectiveness of the device. The objective of the pilot is to provide water usage information to multifamily customers and to also evaluate the device. BWP is also in the process of developing the Hydration Station Program to provide incentives to 16 to 20 hydration stations located in disadvantaged communities throughout Burbank. And program objectives are to provide the community with access to safe and reliable water and to encourage resource conservation and plastic water bottle-based reduction. Rebates are proposed at $1,500 for the station itself and up to $1,000 for plumbing and installation. And organizations in high pedestrian traffic areas within disadvantaged communities will be eligible. We will be reaching out to Burbank Unified School District, schools are ideal candidates for hydration stations, and we will be also reaching out to parks and other organizations after the program is up and running. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Roseanne, can you turn on your camera, please? Thanks.
Okay, just a second.
Thank you very much for your report. Do my colleagues have any questions, comments? Councilmember Frutos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. When we were talking about on page six, slide 11, laundry-to-landscape graywater systems. You said we can't use it for lawns? Did I hear you right? How come?
That is correct. Laundry-to-landscape graywater systems are only used to water plants, shrubs, and trees, and it's under, you have to cover it with mulch, and you cannot spray graywater. That's the reason we cannot use it for our lawns.
Okay, and then my other question, it's not covered in your report, but when it comes to water conservation programs, is the utility working with the CDD Director, Mr. Prescott, with regards to as we're getting more development, especially with SB 35 and all the mandates? Are there any discussions to have developers as part of community, you know, give hacks, start to, you know, bring more purple pipes into the neighborhoods where these developments are going in so the residents can, you know, get some of the benefits to help save water, you know, portable water benefits?
Thank you for the question. I will actually ask Richard Wilson, our Assistant General Manager Water, to answer any questions regarding recycled water. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Wilson.
Hello, good evening and Happy New Year. Councilmember Frutos, if I understand the question correctly, you're asking if there are any mechanisms in place to have developers help pay for extensions of recycled water mains to their developments, is that correct?
Which residents close to that development would hopefully, if they're interested in, you know, getting, you know, recycled water for their landscaping so we can save on portable water? Are there any conversations with that as community benefits for, because we've got a couple more developments coming down the pipe?
Sure, yes. I've talked to CDD, our Community Development Department, about approaching developers when we first meet with a developer to discuss their project, to float the idea by and have that as an ask, that we extend a recycled water main to their project. As far as being able to have homeowners book into that, there's two issues with that. It would cost about $10,000 for each homeowner to put a, you know, tap into the main and put in a meter. And then you would have the risk of having a dual plumbing in a household, which is problematic in that there could be the potential for a cross-contamination in that household from the potable system to the, from the recycled system to the potable system. And the equipment would have to be, you have to have what they call, what the Department of Public Health calls an onsite supervisor. That's what our commercial customers have for recycled water. They have an onsite supervisor to make sure that all of the regulations and the use of recycled water are done to code. So having that sort of a setup, dual plumbing in a household, could be problematic.
Okay, final, outside-the-box question regarding graywater. And this will be my final question, Mr. Mayor. So during the last drought, before I got elected, the council at that time allowed residents for free to get recycled water. And, you know, people, I saw people literally with a 300-gallon tank, and a lot of the residents, they really took stock in that, and it helped save, you know, the precious, you know, drinking water. Is there any discussion, especially in the climate that we're in with the drought and looking at new ways of saving the precious drinking water? Any ideas of that, because I didn't see anything in your report? Just thinking outside the box, during the council period during that time, I thought it was pretty successful.
Thank you for the question. There are no any discussions right now for advancing program, but there are rebates available for rain barrels and cisterns that customers can take advantage to capture rainwater and utilize it in their gardens.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No more questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Springer?
Thank you, Ms. Soloyan, for your report, and great job on the grants for leak detection and hydration stations. Are there rebates available for the washing machine graywater systems or the others also?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Springer. There aren't any rebates available for laundry-to-landscape graywater systems, but we offer all of the educational resources to our customers who are interested in learning about graywater and installing their graywater systems by themselves.
Okay, I guess potentially for a rebate, that would be, would that come to us? Mr. City Manager or Mayor Telemontes? I think we lost.
What was your question, one more time?
Oh, so if, if we felt there was a potential, a need for rebates for graywater systems, because actually it costs more than I thought it. I thought maybe it would be $50, and so $200 to $300 is a bit much for a family. So that's why my question on rebates and if they would be a possibility in the future.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Go ahead, Mr. City Manager.
Absolutely. I mean, you could certainly direct the staff to look into that and bring that, bring back a potential new program and tweak our current one in the upcoming budget process. So I know they, we do bring this report back at different intervals, but if you give us that direction, if there's a majority of council that would like to do that, we could certainly look into that and bring back a proposal.
Okay, thank you. And so the graywater, though it cannot be used on lawns, can be used to irrigate rosebushes and trees, fruit trees, is that correct?
That is correct. It can be used for individual plants, but not for the lawn.
Okay, and on the, you noted how much time it would require to break even on a project. But each of those conservation measures, do they not contribute to our 15% water reduction mandate? I guess my point is, is that it might, it might take a while, but we've been mandated by the governor to reduce our water consumption by 15%. And I know our residents have done a great job in recent years, so it's just another way that we can reduce.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Springer. That's why we added additional rebates for conservation devices to encourage further conservation. But when it comes to laundry-to-landscape graywater systems, those systems require not only, they are not that cost-effective compared to other conservation measures. And also, there are ongoing maintenance costs that residents have to do, and they have to use specific types of detergents. So when you, we put it on the scale of all the water conservation measures and rebates, it's not that cost-effective. That's the reason we do not provide rebates at this point. Yes, it will help customers to conserve, and it will contribute to that 15%.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So you had a chart of, I think it was professional graywater systems. It was the one on the far right, the blue bar. Do those systems require treatment?
No, the chart actually showed cost-effectiveness, acre foot per, acre foot of water savings, dollars per acre foot of water savings for a graywater system that is installed by a homeowner. And a graywater system, same graywater system that is installed by a professional installer, because usually when homeowners install those laundry-to-landscape graywater systems, it costs them a couple of hundred dollars. But if they have to hire a professional installer, and they do not want to install the system, it can be several thousand dollars. So that's what you saw on the chart. And if the system is installed by, if laundry-to-landscape graywater system is installed by a professional installer, then the cost-effective, it's not cost-effective at all.
Right.
And it takes 100 years to break even.
Right, that's a long time. And so I know Mr. Wilson commented on the graywater, excuse me, recycled water. So is there any potential for new developments to professionally install graywater systems, like say for some of these multifamily projects? Or even have a water treatment plant onsite? Is that just too far into the future that we don't think about it?
I think Mr. Wilson covered that question, and same with graywater. It will require a dual plumbing and more upfront costs. And also, simple and complex graywater systems, they also require a permit. My presentation, when I described the laundry-to-landscape graywater systems, those are the most simple graywater systems. They do not require a permit. But if we're talking about treating water and, then that's, those are more complex systems with, will require dual plumbing.
Okay, so maybe if somebody were willing to pay the price of that, or if we, if it was something that we could ask? And just the, you know, the question about onsite water treatment, is that like in the future anytime soon? Because I know we were talking about, we were thinking about direct potable recharge, and that's, I think that's further into the future now. I know we had a grant to study that, so. And so it's kind of similar to that, I think.
Well, if I could jump in for a second. You know, I like, I like the idea. I like what you're, what you're thinking about. In terms of having an onsite treatment plant, though, it does get into the question of is there somebody qualified to maintain it and operate it and make sure that it's not tampered with? It would have to be the It would have to be the type of system that is only used for certain shrubs and plants. It wouldn't be used, as, as, as Ruzan said, for, for landscaping if it's, if it's strictly lawns, for example. So. It, it's, it's possible, but it gets into the same area of having recycled water in a home, the dual plumbing aspect and having somebody qualified to make sure that it is properly permitted and that we don't violate the, the, the regulations and having somebody onsite to make sure, to make sure that it's operated correctly and properly maintained and that it's not, not tampered with.
Okay, so the, the idea of water treatment to potability, water treatment onsite to potability is just too far out into the future.
Oh, you're, you're talking about a direct potable reuse system onsite?
Yes.
Yeah. Technically it's, it's feasible, but it would be very costly. And you'd, again, you'd have to have somebody to maintain it, operate it. It takes a lot of energy in order to convert that, that recycled water into direct potable water. And you would have to constantly test the water to make sure that it, it meets state and federal requirements for, for drinking.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Springer. Any other council members have any questions? Councilmember Schultz?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to staff for a really thorough report and presentation. I just had two quick questions. Number one, if there's somebody who's watching this meeting recording tomorrow and wants to go online and learn more about our water conservation programs, where would you direct them to?
Thank you for the question. Actually, we recently updated our website and we have two new videos on our website that tells the story of water in Burbank. And also it tells, it describes all of the programs and incentives available to our customers. So our, I would, I would direct our customers to our website for more information.
And what is it?
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
What is the website? Real quick.
Excuse me?
What is the website?
Burbank Water, Water, Burbank Water and Power dot com.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was a good catch. The only other question I had was, I thought the staff report was exceptional. We had detailed discussion about all 13 highlighted programs. My only question was, do we have any data about the, the effectiveness of our water conservation programs? I mean, we have a lot of great tools for our, our residents to take advantage of. But do we have any data on how successful those programs have been?
Thank you for the question. We actually track our performance statistics on an annual basis. And we have a 1% water consumption reduction goal. And that's how we measure the effectiveness of our programs. And when we, we're not, and we utilize those performance stats to make recommendations for any program redesign or new programs based on water savings.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I've got a couple. You know, we have a lot of rebates. We have a lot of conservation programs. But one thing that I don't see in the report, or hasn't really been discussed over the years, is any rebates for pool conservation of the water conservation in pools? There's a lot of pools in Burbank. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the question, Mayor Talamontes. Actually, we offer $50 bill credit for purchasing a pool cover.
Wait a minute, did I hear that right? $50?
$50.
That's all?
That's all. We are actually considering revisiting the program and making some changes in the future.
Are you aware how much a pool cover costs?
It, it is expensive. I am aware of that.
Okay. All right. So there is a rebate, but we don't, do we advertise that at all anywhere in your website?
It's on our website, yes.
It's on the website, okay. No, my second question is, how do we advertise these programs? I know we've directed people to the website, but are we more proactive than having, having them come to us? Do we go to them, the residents, and let them know what we have available?
Thank you for the question. Yes, we go to them. Actually, we use various communication channels, including our website, print currents, e-currents, bill graphics, billing certs, and different flyers and handouts to inform our, our customers about all the programs that we offer. And we use all of these communication channels to inform customers about the drought and about our water conservation programs. And I, I would say the main communication channel that we really use for our residential customers is our print currents because seven out of 10 our customers read print currents.
They read it? They read the Currents magazine?
Yes, they do. Seven out of 10, the recent survey showed that seven out of 10 customers read print currents.
Do you know if Burbank Water and Power has, has ever done on the, in the recent past, a survey in regards to when, when a resident takes advantage of these rebates? Do we ask them, how did you hear about it? Or how did you find out about these rebates that were available? Just to keep, kind of a, a guide on, what are we being really, what should we be spending more money on?
Thank you for the question. I know that we have a question about how they hear about rebates and programs. But I don't want to speak to that right now because I don't have all the information readily available right now with me.
In a future, in a future meeting or something, I'm sure council would like to know. And just kind of to be, piggyback on Councilmember Schultz, are our programs being effective? Are they being used? You know what I mean? It's, we have a variety of programs and rebates, and that's great for our community. But if they're not being used, should we redirect those monies somewhere else in another program? Maybe instead of $50, $100 for the pool cover? I mean, that's just a suggestion, looking from my standpoint.
Thank, thank, I will look into that suggestion.
Great, thank you. The other, I just want to piggyback on Councilmember Frudos' comment. I believe I was the one that brought that up several years ago, Councilmember Frudos. I, I wanted to use obviously some of that recycled water and people took advantage of it. You're right. I went up there and they had a couple of big troughs, you know, fire hose that was leading to it. People were bringing up their, their containers to fill up with, and it was awesome. But yeah, that's a good point. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other comments? Okay, so the recommendation is to note and file. All those in favor? Excellent. Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Very informative.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments. You'd like to start. Yes, Councilmember Frudos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back on December, Thursday, December the 16th, I joined you at the Burbank Chamber Annual Board Installation Luncheon. Later on that evening, I attended the meet and greet Holiday Mixer with our Assembly Member Laura Friedman and Senator Portantino there, plus Councilmember Schultz and Springer were there also. On Sunday, December the 19th, I joined the mayor and he attended with me. I was there to the Lima Street 20th Christmas Celebration, a big Christmas block party. And I believe, I forgot to mention, Councilmember Schultz was there, I believe. I know Vice Mayor Anthony was there also. On Monday, December the 20th, I met with our new city attorney, Mr. Joe McDougall, to just get a one-on-one, what is his vision, what is he doing? Talked about old ordinances. So it was a good, informative meeting I had with our, our top counselor of the city. Then on Thursday, Christmas Eve, 23rd actually, I attended a retirement party for Mr. Darren Borders. He was a library employee and a resident of Burbank. He served our community for 37 years. Thank you, Darren, for, for every contribution you did to help out a library system the way it is. And people love the library, but you're, you're a pioneer in that. Thank you, sir. And then on Christmas Eve, I showed up at Old Ark 30 and I went on a ride along with one of our solid waste professional truck drivers. And just wanted to be there and show my support. Every day they go out and they pick up our solid waste and learned a lot about their jobs, including for the residents. If you have a small recycled blue can and you'd like to get a bigger one, a free one, all you gotta do is just get ahold of Public Works under, under Waste Management. And what they're trying to do is replace the older, smaller containers with the regular sized bigger ones. So hopefully residents don't have to put their trash can every day, every once a week type day. And you can maybe do it every two weeks, but definitely they're out there. And what I was very impressed with is that if our residents, and, and I know the mayor talks about, you know, platinum service for the residents and fighting hard like we all do, is that if you call the city of LA, it could take you a month to two months to get a trash can replaced. Here in Burbank generally, if you call in right after your trash day pickup, the next scheduled trash day pickup a week later, they physically send an employee out there and they replace your trash receptacle with a new one, right on the spot. No costs, additional costs or anything. I mean, that's just our commitment and service that these fine employees provide. And then I also attended the, the day before on Friday, December the 30th. I showed up a little bit late, but I did show up to the barn where they were working on the float. And then I also attended the judging on Friday, the 31st and wanted to congratulate everybody that worked hard, the directors, the volunteers. We got the mayor's award, outstanding. And to the members of the community, the dinosaur is on display right across the street on Glen Oaks and Olive from our Central Library. Way to go, Tournament of Roses, way to go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Frudos made it easy for me, so I'm just going to be very brief. In addition to what he said, Friday, December 17th, I think several of you were there with me at the Kids Community Dental Clinic Holiday Cheer Event. It was great to see our, our new police chief there as well, now that we can say it's official. And then on Wednesday, the 22nd, I just wanted to give a thank you to our city manager, Assistant City Manager, Ms. McClinton. I wanted to do a deeper dive into our salary survey, which is one of the tools we use when we're negotiating contracts with labor. And I had a great meeting, got a better understanding of the methodology behind the salary survey. And I know my more senior colleagues are probably already well aware of that information. But being a newbie, it was incredibly useful information. So thank you to everyone for taking the time to do that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Springer.
Yes, thank you. I saw my colleagues at many of these events. And I want to wish all of you a Happy New Year and our residents too, and our employees, our staff. And I had a conversation with somebody from Streets for All concerning the BRT. And also with another person, RE WHAM. WHAM stands for the Initiative Measure W H A M. And it's an attempt to integrate and maximize the benefit of those. It's something I'm just learning about. And I too attended the Tournament of Roses, the, the judging both days. And congratulations to the Tournament of Roses, to all the volunteers who worked so hard. Congratulations on the award. And it's, it's just a fun event. And I know we all appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mayor Talamontes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember, Vice Mayor Anthony, sorry. Almost.
I was just going to mention, on the 16th of December, I attended the Valley Economic Alliance Board of Directors, the annual meeting and the installation of officers. And we won't go into what happened there now. But if anyone out there in the public has not been to this place that they held it. So this year they were at the Valley Relics Museum in Van Nuys. It's a, it's just basically a giant warehouse of all the old cool stuff from the valley. Old neon signs, you know, great structures that were torn down and replaced and all that stuff. So just really great classic stuff and they've got it all curated. So if you ever get a chance, check it out, Valley Relics Museum in Van Nuys. I was able to enjoy the mayor's speech. He gave an excellent heartwarming speech about economics and coming out of the pandemic and, and moving forward. So it was, it was, all in all, it was, it was a great meeting. And then for the last couple of weeks, I've actually been out of town. And I just have to say personally, I drove up and down the state the last 10 days. All very safe, all in my car and all that. But the number of cities in this state that do not take care of their roads, their infrastructure, the design of their streets, the, the setup of their downtowns, it, it pales in comparison to what we have done in this city. I, you know, not to knock everybody else in California, but I mean, Burbank is doing it right. If, once the pandemic is over, please, please, if you're watching, if you're listening, take a road trip, check out what else is going on. And when you come home, you're going to appreciate Burbank so much more. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Well, I'll weigh in. Just a couple items that was mentioned by the vice mayor. The Valley Economic Alliance Board of Directors Meeting, a great place. I mean, if you ever get a chance, Valley Relics, I believe it is, in Van Nuys. Big warehouse with just, it'll take you back to your, to your young days when you were a kid. Some of those signs that have been put up there. Just a great place. I was really enlightened by the, just the different, the history that's in there. So if you get a chance, Valley Relics over in Van Nuys. What else? I also attended Curtis Peters Eagle Scout Court of Honor. And Curtis, the new Eagle Scout, is the son of Pat Peters. Pat is, is a, a young man, well, a father now, obviously, that played on my soft, my baseball team. My son Eric and Pat and several other kids from Jefferson, we started a baseball team. And so it goes back a long ways. So I was very honored to attend his son's Court of Honor, which is an exciting time. Once an eagle, always an eagle. Congratulations, Curtis, on your accomplishment. And Pat, congratulations on your encouragement. Because it does take encouragement of, of the family members and, and scout masters to encourage a youth, a young man to reach the Eagle status. Because along the way, there's a lot of, you know, and I've, and I've seen it with both of my boys that are Eagle Scouts as, as they were growing up. Other kids that were not involved in scouting would make fun of them because they'd have to put their uniform on. You just have to ignore that kind of stuff, all the negativity that life brings on you at early ages even. But anyway, congratulations. And one more congratulations, Burbank Tournament of Roses Association. Congratulations on the mayor's trophy. I just want to mention something that happens to be my second mayor's trophy. Back in 10 years ago, 2012, the city won the mayor's trophy. And I was fortunate enough to be mayor at the time. And here I am again in, in 2022, the mayor's trophy. So. Thank you for all the work. There's a lot of effort that's put into it, a lot of sweat and tears that go into those, into those floats. Looked beautiful on TV. Awesome. Once again, congratulations to the entire board and all the staff and people that come, the volunteers that come in and put the flowers on the float to make it look amazing. So having said that, thank you very much. We now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, January 11th. That's, pardon me? Yes, definitely. Councilmembers, we have introduction of additional agenda items. If anybody has one, and Council, Vice Mayor Anthony.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just got an email come through from Tomo Takahashi requesting information about, um, call-in public comment. So I'd like a white paper on, in two parts. One, the technological feasibility of us, uh, maintaining public comment call-in during a live meeting. And two, um, the legal framework that that would be permitted under, if, if possible, if it's permitted.
Is this coming from you, Vice Mayor? Obviously, you mentioned, you mentioned that you got an email from somebody. You mentioned that you got an email from somebody.
It just came through. So I mean, sorry.
Well, whether it came through just now or it came through a week ago, uh, that didn't have to be said. But anyway, let's follow through.
Sure.
Mr. City Attorney?
Well, so generally, the, um, over the years, the council has taken initiative to reformat its meetings in a way that the meetings can move efficiently. The nature of how public comment is provided and how long and when the periods are is at the council's discretion. So, um, I guess we can pull together information on how the council has done it in the past, but the last big, uh, reformat, um, uh, we, we can provide that information on how the council did it. There's not as, as much legal impediments and that is, than more practical and council's own preference on how it runs its meetings.
Okay.
Okay. Just, yeah, a simple white paper on that would be great, just to see.
A simple white paper. Uh, any, anyone else? All right. Well, thank you very much for that. Uh, we now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, January eleventh at six P.M. For a regular meeting through an online meeting process, the public may view the meeting online or on television and will be able to provide public comment in the following three ways. By leaving an e-comment on the city webpage, which is burbankca.gov backslash ecomments. Number two, by emailing the city council directly at citycouncil@burbankca.gov. And number three, by calling in directly to the council meeting at eight one eight two three eight three 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 five. So having said that, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year and good night and stay safe. Thank you.